Go ahead and call the meeting to order if you would please rise. Pastor Bob there with Odessa Bible Church, if you would please come forward and lead this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's go, Lord, in prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we do thank you so much for the city that you've given us. Thank you for the leadership that we have. Pray your blessing upon our city, Father. I pray that she would prosper, that, Father, we would find peace and prosperity here. Our families would grow and, Father, our faith would be encouraged. So I pray that you be with our city leaders. I pray that you give them wisdom and understanding in managing the resources that you've provided through our citizens. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please, Pastor. Councilmember Gardner is out on a field, so I will lead us in the pledges. If you would, please place the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, Texas.
(Inaudible) Texas flag, (Inaudible) Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. Charles Carlson could come to the front, please. It is our pleasure to be able to present a plaque to Charles Carlson in appreciation for outstanding leadership and contribution in economic development to our community and citizens. Odessa Development Corporation, May 2011 to December 2017. Charles, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your service. We're going to miss you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor, thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to serve my community.
It was a pleasure. I appreciate, first Dean Collins and then Mike Carter appointing me to this opportunity. What a wonderful board. What a wonderful opportunity to serve this community. I appreciate the fine people that I've worked with. I appreciate my wife, that has had to put up with some of the negatives that I've brought home, that I shouldn't have done. And I look forward to this community to continue to grow. I've been here for over forty years, and this is probably the best community service project that I've ever been involved in. Thank you for that opportunity.
Can I say something? Charles, I want to personally shake your hand, because you did a very good job at the OBC. I think the city of Odessa is better because you were there. I feel honored that I got to know you. You were firm, but you were fair, and I appreciate that. So you are an example of anybody that leads or that serves, you are an example. You are an example for me, but I sincerely appreciate you, and I wanted to come down here and shake your hand for what you did. Thank you so much.
Okay, next to the loop, consider agenda. We do need to table item A and pull off item D. We have a motion. So move. Second. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we will have to have a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda. So move, we have a second.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item D, consider CRWD secondary delivery point agreement and resolution. Mr. Kerr.
Mr. Kerr is not here tonight. He has a flu as well, so I'll make an attempt at this and I'll ask the legal department to help out, because I know they worked on the agreement. But the item for your consideration this evening is to approve a secondary delivery point. This additional delivery point is a direct result of the new pump station that the city built off of Loop 338 and about 191 to divert reuse water and provide raw water to primarily the Rat the French, UTBD, and so we could then sell that reuse water to Pioneer. This is, again, establishment of just a delivery point. We have two additional secondary delivery points. This would just be an additional one.
Okay, any questions?
What do you mean delivery points?
We have a... Yes, sir. We have a primary delivery point for all of our water, and that's at the plant on Goldr and 42nd. But obviously, you don't want to rely on just one delivery point, so as a consequence, we've established, I believe, back in the eighties, one delivery point, and then an additional one perhaps late nineties, and this is just one more point where we can access water should something happen to our primary delivery point.
And this water is going for what now?
The water, the purpose of the building of the pump station, this graph, was to divert the water that would be used, the reuse water that would have been used for irrigation of, let's say, Rat the French, so that reuse water could then be sold to Pioneer for a much higher rate. We could reap the benefits of that additional rate to be used for additional water infrastructure improvement. This just happens to be a good location for another delivery point as well.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. So move. Second. Motion is second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, vote is three to one, and the motion passes. Under other council action, consider purchase of squad ambulances for fire rescue. Mr. Phillips.
Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor, the intention of item is to purchase one squad ambulance for Odessa fire rescue. This item would be through Sintz Martin, through utilizing the HGAC contract, cooperative contract. The unit that we're replacing is a 2012 model. It's six years old and has 144,000 miles on it, and we've spent about 246,000 in maintenance, so it is time to get this unit out. It is a budgeted and scheduled purchase. The new item would be $340,456.13. That includes a turnkey package that's delivered to us, and only the radio and computer need to be programmed. This also includes a maintenance program for five years for the life of the vehicle as well.
Okay, three questions. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item two, consider purchase of a street crack shooting rig.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, this agenda item is for a crack shooting rig. This rig will repair cracks and potholes in streets before they are paved over for repairs. The item that we are seeking to replace is not a scheduled purchase or budgeted purchase for this fiscal year. However, in the Equipment Services Fund, we do have an emergency fund of $100,000 that we'd like to purchase this out of. The purchase would be for a Craftco unit, and it would be $86,491. The unit we're replacing is eight years old, and we've spent about eighty, I'm sorry, about $58,000 in maintenance in it, so if we do continue maintenance on it, we will approach the cost of buying a new one, so it is time to get this one out as well.
Okay, any questions?
Now, we need to do this during cool weather also, don't we?
Correct. Yes, ma'am. It is important that we do it in this time frame.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
Motion is second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, the public hearing will open a public hearing to consider the approval with a request by Verna Schulte Hedley. Mr. Brenner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This first item was first approved on a first reading by the council back on January the ninth of this year. The property involved in the request is located south and east of the intersection of East Loop 338 and 56th Street. This site is currently vacant. Land use in the area does consist of vacant land and retail use development. The applicant in the case and the property owner is Verna Hedley, and the purpose of this request would facilitate retail use development on the property, and in this case, it would be a CrossFit Personal Services gym. The proposed land use for this area is consistent with the city's future land use map. This area is considered a prime retail development land along Northeast Loop 338. 338, and this development would act as a buffer for any future residential development that occurs to the east of this site. Retail design proposed for this development would include aesthetic guidelines, it would include building articulation, landscaping, screening, buffering, and controlled ingress and egress. Any metal building that would be built on the property would include building materials that presented enhanced space to the public. The city's traffic engineering department has determined that proposed development for this property would not add a significant amount of traffic to East 56th Street. Any traffic increase to the nearby intersection of East Loop 338 would be addressed with traffic signals that scheduled to be installed on the loop by Text dot later this year. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to the request for retail zoning, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation and be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Do we have any idea of the type of retail they're going to put in?
Yes, ma'am. It'll be a personal services gymnasium, like aerobic dancing and things like that.
Okay.
Yeah, physical fitness type activities.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item four, open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Russell D. Subia. Mr. Brenner.
Yes, sir. The council did approve this request on first reading also back on January the ninth of this year. The property involved in the request is located southwest of the intersection of Linda Avenue and West 22nd Street. This site too is also vacant, and land use in the area does consist of retail development, single-family residential development, and to the north of this site is a drill site. The applicant and property owner is Russell Subia, and the purpose of the rezoning request from single-family free to retail would facilitate retail use development and related uses on this property. This area is located in the western portion of the city's future land use map. This area is considered appropriate for retail development along Loop 338 and also adjacent to medium-density residential development that does occur moving east of this site. The proposed zoning is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The zoning requested for this site and the proposed development design is consistent with the city's priority for placing retail development adjacent to a major traffic transportation corridor that would serve as a buffer for existing residential development. An analysis by the city's traffic engineering department has determined that the proposed retail use development of this site would have a minimum impact on traffic in the area, and the proposed design of development in this area would incorporate design access up here, if I can get this to go, up here on the north and also on the west, and there would also be incorporated into the design development on this property of buffering, landscaping, and solid masonry fencing to minimize any impact to surrounding residential development. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request of retail zoning, and staff does concur with this recommendation for approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
I have a couple. Why is not the whole block not being, you see that little section?
To the north?
Yeah.
That is Tesco right-of-way, and it will never be utilized for any type of development.
It's a... A power line?
Yeah, well, it's an overhead power line.
Power line.
Tesco property, and they didn't want to have it zoned that way, so it's not included in the rezoning request.
Also, one of the major problems that we've had, and with the help of the administration of the city, we have a lot of big trucks, eighteen-wheelers parking right there on the edge, and I don't know if Mr. Subia's here, but that's one thing that we're going to have to, you know, kind of monitor and everything else. From what you're saying, it's going to be addressed with that fence somewhat?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So... I'm of the opinion that the development of this property would help ease that problem substantially.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a...
Could I ask something real quick? You had several people that were against this and filled out forms. Has anyone talked to them, expressed what's going to be going on, and talk about the fact that the two streets, Linda and...
22nd.
...Candace Street, would not be involved in this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Good, thank you.
Yes, we've addressed that situation by the ease of concerns on that.
Okay, appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item five, open a public hearing to consider the approval of a request by 2012 CrossB LLC. Mr. Brenner.
Yes, sir. The council approved this request on first reading back on January the ninth of this year. The property involved in this request is located north and east of CrossB Road and Kreek Drive. The sites are currently designated future development drill reservation. They are vacant, and surrounding property in this area is generally vacant land, and in the future, it will be developed as residential development. The applicants and property owners are 2012 CrossB and P-Bar Parks Bell Ranch, and the purpose of the request is to release the property from the drill site designation, rezone the property for residential purposes. Documentation related to the release of the drill sites has been provided. The subject area is located northeast of the intersection, I'm sorry, northeast section of the city's land use map. This area is generally located south of Yukon and north of State Highway 191. This area is considered one of the prime areas for new residential growth in Odessa's existing city limits, and the area would be used for neighborhood housing preservation and as part of the overall housing strategy for the city. The future land use map does call for residential and open space development in this area. The proposed zoning is consistent with that strategy, and the request does enhance the existing neighborhood in this area, and it will result in a continued development of aesthetically pleasing residential neighborhoods. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request, and planning staff does concur with this recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, this is a little public hearing, so at this time, we will open up the floor for anyone that'd like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item six, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Beaton Bo Holmes. Mr. Brenner.
Yes, sir. The city mailed out 109 notices related to this request. Not many notices were returned. We did receive one written approval and two written protests related to the request. The property involved in the request is located northwest of the intersection of East 87th Street and Loop 338. The site is currently designated future development. This site is vacant, and land use in the area does consist of residential development and vacant land. The applicant and property owner in this case is Beaton Bo Holmes, and the purpose of the original zoning request would facilitate approximately 166 acres of single-family residential development. This development would include approximately 899 total lots with an average lot size of about 6,000 square feet, and the projected build-out for this project is about four to four and a half years, so it will be done in phases and not all at once. The site plan approval would, to establish development standards, would be required prior to any development on this property, so we will have control over the development standards that do occur out in this area. The subject area is located in the northern area of the city's future land use map. This area is generally considered one of the prime areas for new residential growth in Odessa. The proposed zoning is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The zoning requested for this site and the proposed development's design is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways with intended land use context taken into consideration. The preliminary design for the traffic flow in this area would coordinate traffic to the north up to 100th Street and to the south to 91st Street, and then flow it out to East Loop 338, and this would minimize any impact to the existing or proposed residential areas in this, in the subdivision. Also, traffic engineering has stated that preliminary design that we have seen will accommodate any anticipated traffic loads for this area that development might occur. The proposed retail zoning adjacent to Loop 338 is inappropriate land use along a major thoroughfare, and attention to design standards and buffering requirements would protect the integrity of the proposed residential development. Also, during the development stage of this project, the city staff will be requesting a backdrogue to be put in adjacent to the residential development, I'm sorry, the residential and retail development. This would be a twofold purpose for safety reasons up on Loop 338 and also to act as a buffering factor between the residential and retail development. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request of special dwelling district and retail zoning, and the staff does concur with this recommendation and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, this is... Yes, go ahead.
What was the written, one written protest? What did they say?
The protest did mention that concern about overuse of water supply and then a stress on the electric grid system, and that will be taken into account when all the development does occur, Mr. Hamilton.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brenner.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion is second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brenner.
Thank you, sir.
Next, under resolution, consider authorizing Text dot interlocal agreement for truck route signs on Loop 338. Mr. Phillips.
Good evening. This is a resolu, or an interlocal agreement between the city of Odessa and Text dot for Text dot to install the large truck route signs on the sub-end gateways into the city. The cost for the signs is $21,510.
This is a project I'm really excited about. Could you explain to us a little bit in detail so that people out here will really know what we're talking about and, rather than just the points of entry?
This has been an ongoing process. I think it started about June of last year in taking, there used to be local truck routes in Odessa and the through truck routes in Odessa. And basically, we've worked on it to consolidate it all down to I-20 and Loop 338 as the truck routes, so that if a truck does not have a destination within the city of Odessa, it shouldn't be on the streets in Odessa. It should be using Loop or I-20 to get through town. And then shell.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but when I looked at that map, it did not say Grant Street, and Grant is a major street coming through the city. Am I correct?
Correct. The new truck route is only Loop 338 and I-20. Trucks can use Grant if they have a destination that that's the shortest route to get there.
Okay, but why are we not posting signs on all along Grant, coming, crossing under I-20?
We are. We are proj, we are, Text dot is installing signs on 385 on the north and south sides of the loop before they get into town, because if they're approaching town, they shouldn't be using Loop.
Okay, yes. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion is second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Hal. Thank you, Mayor, for pushing that through.
Sure. Item A, consider authorizing the nomination of TEC Well Services for Texas State Enterprise Zone Project. Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, this evening, this item is requesting your approval. It is a resolution for the nomination of TEC Well Services, a local firm. The state of Texas does have an opportunity for businesses that are going to invest in their communities and create jobs to regain a portion of their sales tax back. It is through the Texas Enterprise Zone Program. Part of that includes an application. The application does require that the community in which that project will be located nominate that particular company for the program. TEC in their application will commit to investing at least $30 million in improvements to their facility and employ anywhere from 75 to 100 new individuals in our community. It will not impact the city's sales tax at all, but rather, it will enhance those, any equipment that is bought in the city as part of that development will reap the benefits of those sales taxes, and obviously, with a $30 million investment, we will also see an improvement in property value for that particular site.
Are there any questions?
And if they buy items somewhere other than Odessa or Ector County, we get those taxes, right?
Correct. If they're successful in their full application.
Okay.
The statement would be that if TEC is not approved by the state, we encourage them to file an application with the OBC. Thank y'all for being here.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion is second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, abstain.
Okay, vote is three with one abstention, and motion passes. Congratulations. Item nine, consider approving a contract with GE XA Energy Solutions. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. The item, this particular item that we are seeking your approval on is for the contract with Texas Energy Solutions. It will also within the current budget, so we can take money from the general fund to perform what we call an investment-grade audit. This is part of a larger energy improvement and improvements to the mechanical systems at the municipal plaza and municipal court PD building. Both of the units and both of those buildings are severely compromised. This investment-grade audit is essentially a thorough analysis of the current problems with, again, the mechanical systems at both the facilities. We should have a complete report of exactly what needs to be done in order to repair those. Part of this will also include looking at the lighting at both of those buildings and City Hall. Mr. Johnson is here tonight to answer your questions if you want more detail on specifically what the investment-grade audit will do, but once we, this is the first part, if you will, once we get that report back, we will go through the report, and staff will come back to you for your approval for the continued project, which would ultimately be the work that would be done on the facilities.
Okay, are there any questions, your counsel?
Mr. Johnson, if you could come forward, I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
I really grilled you pretty hard, and you responded very well, and I like the things that you said, and you understand where I'm coming from, how I don't want a Band-Aid, how I don't want our city money wasted. I like the answers that you've given. You might briefly tell people about the forensic audit that you will be doing on our equipment and where we might save money, we might not save money. I think they would probably appreciate hearing that, and again, I thank you for the answers that you gave tonight, and appreciate that very much.
You're very welcome. Go ahead.
Texas Energy, first of all, is your electric supplier. We provide electricity to the city of Odessa. My division represents a portion of the company that focuses on helping cities improve their infrastructure and reach a most economical way to operate their buildings, energy conservation. So in talking with the city over this past few months, we've identified a number of areas that are of real...
of areas that are of real concern. First and foremost are the air conditioning systems that Mr. Marero spoke about that are exceptionally compromised. They're well past the end of their useful life at the Plaza Building, and they need to be replaced. So we've taken a preliminary look to determine what the opportunity is and have ascertained that certainly there is an opportunity. What the next step in the process is, is a detailed audit, where we come back and we do a very in-depth engineering-based analysis of not only the Plaza Building, but the police and municipal courts facility to find out exactly what the repairs and renovations and replacement of equipment needs to be. That report will culminate with us bringing it back to the city and showing them exactly what's been found. In addition to those infrastructure repairs, we see a very good opportunity for the city to save significant dollars in lighting through the replacement of fluorescent lightings to LED lighting, much like you have in here. You have the opportunity to reduce lighting costs or lighting consumption anywhere between 40 and 70 percent. So there's a tremendous amount of opportunity there to save energy. Energy savings for the replacement of the air conditioning systems will be determined during the preliminary audit. That calculation and those, those efforts are far beyond the preliminary capabilities that we have. We really have to roll up our sleeves, so to speak, do some very extensive calculations, computer modeling and the like, determine exactly what the energy savings will be for the cities or for the buildings that are getting HVAC replacements. At that time, we'll come back and report in, in that total report what those savings might be. Again, as you start to change out air conditioning, certain pieces of the equipment will be more efficient when we install them, certain pieces of equipment that are being renovated that are not using much energy right now because of their poor performance, when we tune them back up and make them work as intended, they may use a bit more energy. Our anticipation is, at the end of the day, the net energy consumption for the police municipal courts will go down, the net energy consumption for the Plaza Building will go down, all to the benefit of the city. Hopefully, that answers your question. If there's any further, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If not, I will entertain a motion. So, motion in a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Under miscellaneous, we do not have any appointments of boards nor appointment of officers, so we will move to item 12, discuss the pros and cons of single-member district representation, at-large representation, and giving the mayor voting rights. We do have four citizens who would like to speak. I will be only firm to the three minutes, so please try to get everything you can in your three minutes. First will be Javier Hoven. And Javier, if you can give us your address, you didn't write it down on the card.
3006 Byron Avenue, Odessa, Texas. Want to try to have a construction, discussion here about the pros and cons, I tried to make the last meeting was just physically impossible. My questions are, currently, the city council are four-year, four years, two terms with term limits, meaning when council member turns out, they're unable to serve in that particular district. Is that correct? Now, not hypothetically, but realistically, council member could move physically into another district, establish a qual-, as a qualified registered voter, and fill the criteria as a resident, which I believe may be about six months in that resident district, and then rerun in that district. I believe I'm not wrong in this, but also now can a city council member or anybody in this body or former city council members and myself, or even those that have served over 20 years, could also run at the at-large, once turning out. Even the mayor himself, which I'm sure he would even, I wonder if he would entertain the at-large. But nonetheless, you could see a member at any point in time extend their, their time on the council. Is that a con or a pro? Depends on your perception. Okay? As I was thinking, as driving down, there was, I, I, I don't think I could get all my thoughts in three minutes, but I'll try. But the other, the other question in this is how are we looking at the at-large? Are we limited to, into the incorporated City of Odessa? Or are we going beyond into the ETJ? We probably would just wind up being inside the ETJ, but nonetheless, it is a question that needs to be posed and asked. Because of the criteria, the petition, the petition has given us two items. A mayor, you take the status from non-voting to voting, and adding an at-large position. So the quorum right now is three to two. It becomes four with seven more voting body. Mayor's action, we have pro-ten, two pro-tens, we have six members, we have a tie. What happens to the item? It carries over. Potential that will happen. Now, as we continue with the assessment about this and the pros and cons, and like I said, I don't know what is a pro and a con, other than the possibilities of what can happen because we haven't thought about what are the modifications. If I can finish this, just one last thought, if you don't mind, please. I know that there's been a lot of discussion, and we're looking at these two items, but why isn't there a discussion about adding two more districts? You see, we're limited to just two, deciding either we're for this or against and nothing else. We want more of an out of cart. We need a discussion.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Art Leal.
Good evening, counsel. Thank you for the opportunity. I promise I won't have a dog and pony show for you today. Tonight, my comments are only to inform. I want you to know that this so-called bypass action that we all know as a petition has not taken away your ability to govern the city. You each have a responsibility to the city to protect it from all liability and loss, and by that, making sure that all actions taken by you, the governing body of the city, are not in violation of the Constitution and the Federal Voting Rights Act. You owe careful due diligence to the entire City of Odessa. This duty should not be taken lightly, and I only quote from your own handbook, and I respectfully ask that you request from the Department of Justice a legal determination or deplorative judgment from a U.S. District Court that the proposed change that this petition will bring will not result in the denial or the abridgement of the right of any person to vote before calling the election. The city, the city should heed the advice of its attorney to make the determination on whether or not preclearance is not required. Now, I am aware that in 2013, Texas was removed from the requirement of preclearance, but that doesn't take away your responsibility to do your due diligence to make sure that you don't have to obtain preclearance. The city should also seek the counsel of an outside attorney whenever it contemplates any action that might result in a change affecting voting. Not doing so can possibly subject the city officials to civil and criminal penalties. Now, delaying the action when the petition arrives on February 6th or whenever it may, delaying the action, of course, Drain and Swamp may want to sue you, sue you for not taking action on, on the election. And I say let them. I'm confident that the Attorney General of Texas will not find you at fault for deferring until you have more information and you get this determination from the Department of Justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leal.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Appreciate it. Jim Rector, 7100 Tobosa. I want to do several things here. First, I want to refute the comments of Ms. Graff during January 9th meeting where she made a connection between the Charter Management Group and the District Free Recall Effort. Citizens for Charter Amendment had no connection to the recall effort, even though we agreed with it and wish it had been successful. Mr. Gonzalez keeps bringing up the terms collusion and voter block as if that is the reason for the Charter Amendment. Neither myself nor any of our group is repubically mentioned voting block or collusion in our initiative. Those words are fabrication of Mr. Gonzalez, had nothing to do with the impetus to amend the Charter. However, there may be some validity due to Ms. Graff and Mr. Gonzalez's penchant for closet politics. Case in point, three years ago, Ms. Graff called me and asked me to set up a private meeting between herself, Raymond Chavez, and Mr. Gonzalez. The meeting was held with the four of us attending. Mr. Chavez was subjected to an inquisition concerning his position at ODC, the Hispanic Chamber, and the Mexico Initiative. Even though the meeting did not technically violate the Open Meeting Act, it does demonstrate Ms. Graff's desire to convene and conduct non-transparent policy meetings, and so suggests that it could still be happening. The next thing, to develop the western part of Ector County is not possible. The area is a taxable entity of the City of Odessa and exists as a municipal utility district. State law prohibits the annexation of a mud unless the entire mud area is annexed at one time. Even under forced annexation, the area could not be brought into the city limits due to the exorbitant cost of providing infrastructure to the area and the state limitations on annexation percentages. South of I-20 cannot be annexed unless the citizens approve, and a new sewage plant would, and a new sewage plant could be built. The elevation is below our current plant at East Rack, therefore making development essentially impossible. Mr. Gonzalez insists that the city is spending taxpayer dollars developing East Odessa. In other words, Midland County property inside our city of Odessa provides no money for development. Developers bear all costs of water, sewer, streets, and all infrastructure and must present a sizable bond to the city to guarantee completion. Certain council members feel we should curtail development in Midland County ETJ, should reconsider the consequences of such a decision without Midland County, and in the near future Andrews County, Odessa cannot and will not grow. We're landlocked. If we don't grow, our economy will dwindle away, so you're slowly killing our city. To demonstrate our need for Midland County, consider that without Midland County, nobody in Odessa could go to the bathroom because our East Rack is entirely in Midland County. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I know my time here is a brief, but I'd like to take a moment to introduce myself. My name is Dustin Fawcett. Some of you may know me from my work and my capacity as a staffer for Representative Lane Graff, but that is not why I'm here today. I want to make it clear that I am not speaking on behalf of him or our office, but instead I'm speaking as a 27-year-old, young professional citizen of Odessa, who is bewildered and disappointed by the leadership of our community or lack thereof. I'm also the grandson of Coach Myers Schneider, who coached and taught at both NIMSS Junior High and Odessa Permian throughout the 70s, 80s, and 90s. I bring up my grandfather because of the lessons he taught me about the game of life through the sport of football. He always said that Permian wasn't the most talented or physically gifted team, but the secret to their consistent and unwavering success was in their unified identity by focusing on what their strengths and their weaknesses were, and how when you understand these two things, you can develop a winning game plan. What we are witnessing by this council is a lack of a unified identity, or in my grandfather's words, a lack of a winning game plan. How can you come up with a winning game plan when your objective each council session is to make sure one another lose? This council is consistently in here targeting one another's districts.
Excuse me. Here, it's over here. This is to address the single-member district representation, or is that where you're?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay.
Rather than building one another up, this council is accusing one another of malfeasance at political, business, and cultural levels. How can we grow and prosper and win when we are seeking to make everyone else fail? How can we bring business into the area when they don't even know if they'll be welcomed by, by a fickle and blatantly erratic council? How does a young person like me have optimism while fearing, fearing that our own city government is going to sabotage my personal prosperity and future? We already struggle to bring folks my age out here. Without this city council's petty arguments, how am I supposed to convince any level-headed young professional to come to a city that targets success and tries to manipulate development while also participating in horrendous practice of identity politics? It is mind-blowing to think that the top representatives of such an honest and hard-working community think that leadership means that by ripping up someone else's lawn, it makes theirs greener. I don't hear the folks out in Winkler County calling out, calling government referendums to move frac sand mining operations out of the sand dunes and into a different region of their county without sand solely because it is not fair that one county commissioner gets more activity. That's not what government does, but that's what some here are trying to rationalize. Development and success here in Odessa are not a zero-sum game. We are all in this together. I understand wanting to properly represent your community. They voted you into office, but do you honestly feel the constituents of your district care what cardinal direction their job and livelihood is located? Furthermore, do you think that the constituents of your respective districts don't join the fruits of another district's labor? Are we not all Odessans? And to get back on the topic of the citywide and voting, mayoral seat referendum, do you not think that better constituent representation of an area home to such an economic powerhouse that we have out here in the basin that is so crucial to all our families out here and families across Texas is actually a bad idea? Thankfully, it's not your choice, it is up to the voters. I have one last thing. While this council has caused unnecessary obstacles in the future of our great city, I refuse to be pessimistic.
That's three minutes, so I'm sorry.
Not because of any voting referendum or any decisions made by any elected official, because we live in Odessa. If there's one thing we know, is that with every bust comes a boom afterwards.
Excellent. Okay, now with council members, council member has asked. Is Mr. Javier Hoven here?
He left.
He left?
I think he left.
Uh, Mr. Jim Rector?
I think he left.
He left? Mr. Jim Rector?
I saw him at that one.
Can I have a question for you? Can you?
Sure. Mr. Javier Hoven made a, made a point earlier today and about, we're not talking about different options. And do you not remember that meeting that, you know, you and I had about you wanted to talk to me about doing the at-large or adding another person and giving the mayor voting rights? Did I not bring that up to you as saying, why not create more, two other districts instead of doing the at-large? What was your response to me on that?
I don't recall exactly, but I know what my response would have been. It was an extremely difficult process to do, takes long-term, takes years to do it.
But if it's the rest of the city...
And I don't think, I don't feel like it's the thing today to do for this city to progress. If sometime in the future, it's probably going to happen because this city, as you can see, is expanding like crazy, 600 how own subdivisions going in right and left. So District Four is an example. Mike's not here. This, this byhem is going to be divided up into something because it's huge. And in the future, we may, but for right now, this, our proposition is the most effective way to give citizens representation in this city until such time as it might be possible. There's nothing, there's nothing to say that wouldn't happen. It could. It's not, it's not normal, though, I'll tell you that. If you look at the cities that are our size and somewhat larger, it's very seldom that they have that many districts. It's because they become unmanageable, you almost need, in a case like that, you almost need two district representative, council representatives for district because they just get too big, too populous. So it's, it's pretty difficult. You'll find that most of them are elected at-large, even, even single-member districts are elected at-large. You, you folks are elected from your district, but we're the only town in Texas where that occurs. All the rest of them, only one other has a five-member council, and that's Louisville, and they're all elected at-large. So all I'm saying is, what you're saying is possible, Mr. Gonzalez, I wouldn't say it's not. It probably is, but that's way in the future. But right now, what we need to do is, is add citizen representation on this council.
This city has been run by this system for the longest time.
Twenty-three years.
Mayor Melton was here, he ran it the same way, and we had great success. And one of the, one of the key words that Mr. Javier Hoven said was perception, you know, and I'd like to change that word to intentions, you know, what are the intentions?
Change it to what?
Huh?
What, will you change it to? Why would you change that to?
Intentions. What are the intentions and what are they trying to accomplish by doing this at-large? And why now? Why not wait till we have, you know, the census done and completed, so that way we can make an accurate change and not spend people's money unnecessarily when we have this census coming up? Everybody, I believe, I can't speak for everybody here, but I think everybody here knows, and we all have to address, the city has grown. We have to address that. But you have not given the citizens of Odessa a option or other options to be able to vote on. Why is it just that one at-large? Why can't we not add, you know, on the ballot to, hey, if you don't agree with this, let's add two more districts? Let the community decide, and let them decide.
Are you negotiating with me now, or what are we doing?
Negotiating, I'm just saying, because it was.
I need to answer any more questions? Huh? Do I need to answer any more questions? Go ahead, I mean, you're talking, but I'm going to go back there if you're not, if I don't have to answer any more questions.
I'm addressing, I'm allowing you to have a conversation with me. If you don't feel that's important, then you may sit down, sir.
I don't, I don't, I can't answer those things, neither can you. You say, why not two? Why not two? Why not?
So, you would not be opposed?
Why do it now? Why not do it now? That's all, that's all conjecture, Mr. Gonzalez, I mean, I can't, I can't help you with that. It's your opinion and my opinion and everybody else's opinion.
But you've been misleading the whole community with your opinion, sir.
No, sir, I'm not.
That's the problem I have.
But that's your opinion, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day.
Okay, Ms. Graff, are you finished, Councilmember?
Um, I just want to address one thing, guys, because I was asked, why put it on the agenda? And I don't know if anybody, everybody here knows, this is the only time that we can all be in the same room, all of us here. Mike Gardner is absent because he's sick, but this is the only time that they can hear my opinion. I can hear theirs. We can have, we can talk with the public. There's nothing wrong with it, there's nothing wrong with having controversy, there's nothing wrong with having opposing opinions. At the end of the day, I don't think there's a single person on this council, or if they're more than welcome to call me out right now, that I have bad intentions for the city of Odessa. I don't think there's anybody on here that wants the city of Odessa to fail. But at the end of the day, we can't be scared of talking about it or having conversations about this. I just don't agree with Mr. Jim Rector's ideas and why he wants to do it, and I have that right myself, not only as a city councilman, but as a citizen of Odessa. So, that's my right, guys. This is not to put it on the agenda to be disruptive, to be negative, to do anything other than what's right for the city of Odessa. I like to listen to people, but this is the only time that we can sit together, and I can listen to y'all. They can listen to me. So, that's all I wanted to say. And, you know, if somebody else seconds it again, we're going to put it on the next city council meeting, so we can all talk about it.
Councilmember Graff.
Well, I, I see each district. We have, we have four districts. We have District One, oh, no, we have five districts, I forgot about five. We have one, two, three, four, five districts. I look at District One. Their needs, their wants are not the same as District Three. I look at District Two. Their needs, their desires, their wants are not the same as District Three. I look at Four, and I look at Five, and they're not like District Three either. We're up here to represent our districts. And I think we do a very good job of it, although you can have a different opinion. And anytime we have differences of opinion, that's not bad, because, believe me, if we all vote yes or all vote no on the same thing all the time, folks, you've got a problem. You've really got a problem. We need to do what is best for our district. I sincerely believe from the bottom of my heart that single-member districts represent the people of those districts very, very well. When you have an at-large, and you've got one person trying to represent one, two, three, four, five districts that are all different, I don't care how hard you try, you're not going to do a good job of representing all five of those districts. You can represent one, maybe one and a half, but you're not going to represent all of them very well, because they're all so distinctly different. You need to know and understand your district. You need to know what the people need. You can't do that with at-large. I'm not saying that we need or we don't need more council members. I'm not that smart. When we have the census, it's in the charter, we always hire a specialist that comes in and studies all of the facts, the education, the financial, everything. Then, the demographics. That person is able to sit down and work with each one of the entities and say, look, you need to split up District Four, you need to split up District Two, or you need to split up District Five. But they don't know that until they study the facts. We've got a group that is dead-set on wanting to have more representation. Fine, I'm glad, but get you some facts. You don't have any facts, you don't have any knowledge, other than, I won't, I won't, I won't, I won't. My thing is, if you're going to do something, do it right, do it correctly. Again, I believe that you're much better off with single-member districts. We would need two. But again, I think wait until the census comes out, do it correctly, and do what is best. I don't like mandates, I don't like half-done jobs, and that's the thing that worries me about Mr. Rector's petition. There's not that much information, there's not that facts. We just got out from under the thumb of the government. Do we want to go back under that? I don't. That's, I guess in a nutshell, what I have to say about it.
Councilmember Bryant?
I would go back to, I would read my original comments, and that is that this is a petition to be signed by the citizens of Odessa that wish to. And as a result of, it goes to a vote by the citizens of Odessa. Thank the good Lord, we live in a country where we can do that.
Councilmember Hamilton?
I just find it very alarming that, um, people are supposed to come up here and speak about the pros and cons of an at-large district, but yet still it goes back to where we're incentivizing, where we're not incentivizing. I just wrote a little statement, just listening to some people here. I said, speaking about development of the east or north side, or incentivizing companies to develop in these areas, does not mean that we are in opposition. I think every person here wants what's best for Odessa. And by Odessa, I mean all Odessa. I'm not speaking about those who have versus those who have not. Last time I checked, regardless of whether you're rich, regardless of whether you're poor, everyone here is taxed, and your tax dollars are no more valuable than the poorest man's tax dollars. Just, you might have a few more pennies than that person does. So, these people deserve some type of development. I know I heard Mr. Rector speak about my district saying something about south. I don't think I've ever mentioned anything about developing south of I-20. If anything, I was talking about infield development, or should I say redevelopment of some areas. Don't know if a lot of people know this, maybe because you don't have it next to your home, but where homes used to be when I was a child, there are now empty lots and also trailer homes. So, if you're okay with that, then it should be okay to move one next to your home. So, I, I'm just frustrated with this us versus them. This is not a us versus them. This is about the city of Odessa, what's right for everyone. So, if we're going to, it's more or less like a ship. If we're going to load up everybody to the left or the right side of the ship, sooner or later, that ship will capsize. Am I correct? And that's what's, exactly what's going on. You're going to have a huge influx of problems when we do things like that. So, no one up here is against development, and Mrs. Yoff or, I, I, oh, I'm sorry. I'm not against your hotel, let me tell you that right now. If anything, I was an advocate for it. I just said I thought it would be bigger, because when I look at Odessa, I try to think 15, 20, 30 years down the road, not just for right now. So, that was my only objection to your hotel. As far as me not helping you at all, I work. I can't just take off work just to be one of your social functions, I'm sorry. So, if, if you wanted to speak to me at any time, you could have picked up the phone and called me. Well, I had no reason to speak to you, ma'am, I had all the documentation in front of me that I needed.
Okay. Okay, uh, last item.
I have a question, because if there's one person here, I know we don't always agree to do it, and I still respect it, and one of the things that has happened in this society that I think that people have, you know, merged like and respect, that you have to like somebody in order to respect them. You don't. I mean, I come from the old school where you used to respect the position, you respect the person, you respect your elders, and at the end of the day, doesn't mean you agree with everything that they do. So, my question to you, Du, is, because you talk about giving it to, allowing the community to vote on it. Would you oppose for there being on the ballot to put, give the community an opportunity to either vote for the at-large or vote for two more actually, uh, single district members?
You know, I think it's a question that doesn't pertain to what the situation is. The situation is, is you're complaining about a petition that's in effect right now that's being signed or not signed by citizens of Odessa that are available to bring it to a vote. That is what, that's what is out there today, as I know.
I have never complained about the petition. I've complained about the intentions about the petitions and what they want to accomplish, but I've never complained about the petition. I've always said, and Corey can quote me on this, that I've always said, they have a right to do that. That's what the system does. I'm okay with that.
And that's, that's what is at, at the point right now. That's what we're doing right now.
Okay, so, what would be your answer?
Well, I think the answer is that we are in a situation right now where petition is being signed by, or not signed, but individuals of this city to have an election in May.
Okay, so, as a city councilman or anybody here in the community can actually do the same thing as Jim Rector did and say, I would like to put on the ballot to allow the citizens of Odessa to be able to add two more city council members instead of the at-large? Would you oppose that?
Petition's got to be signed with people.
Not if we vote on it, to put it on there? If we as a city council?
Yes.
You would oppose it?
Yes.
To add two more single district members? Why?
Just because that's where I think.
Okay.
Why do you feel that way?
I believe, I'll explain why.
No?
Well, what are you trying to, what do you, what do you want me to say to the question?
Why do you oppose it?
I said I oppose it because we have a petition out in the city today by the citizens that's being signed there. And I fought that. And I think I made that very public about a month ago, and I brought it to council.
Okay, that is my last, and you're not, you have no more?
Could I say something?
Sure.
First of all, I don't think I have any issue with any councilperson up here, even Dewey, man, Dewey have agreed, and man, Dewey have voted the same, so I highly respect Dewey. Dewey does have his opinion. I, just personally myself, I think that this calling for an at-large position is basically, I would, I would equate it to some spoiled individuals wanting to get their way or have their way, and now all of a sudden, things are not being rubber stamped, and so they feel some type of way about that. I think it's wrong. However, as Mr. Bryant has said, it's a, it's a political process, so if they sign this petition, then the thing is, let's get the voters out and let's have them vote on this thing. I really do feel that, so regardless, Odessa will move forward.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, there's no more comments for citizens, uh, citizens' comments, so we are adjourned.